Good evening. Let's call this special meeting of the Common Council to order. May we have a roll call, please? Mayor Gates, here. Vice Mayor Miles, here. Councilmember Kress, here. Councilmember Lingenfelter, here. Councilmember Scott Staley, present. Councilmember Waite, here. Councilmember Yocum, present, all here. We have a core. Thank you very much. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Thank you all for joining us this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to have discussion about the transaction privilege tax. In the back there, there are some handouts made available for you to review. There won't be a presentation tonight. Tonight is about the council's opportunity to hear from you, members of our community. Please understand that we cannot respond to public comment, but we will make sure, as long as we have contact information on your sign-in sheets, we will make sure that your contact information is made available to the council for their review and response. Because this is such a charged topic, we're going to go ahead and extend the time that you can address the council to four minutes. Please stay within that four minutes, as we do have quite a few people wishing to sign up to speak on this issue. So, moving on to item number two, public comment. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments made from the public will be limited to comments regarding the transaction privilege tax increases, the potential for implementation of a supermajority requirement for future TPT increases, and the potential future implementation of a big-ticket item. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than four minutes. We'll go ahead and call these in the order they were submitted. So may I invite Kim Gross to the podium, please?
I'm lucky number one. Mayor Gates and councilmembers, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I will be reading from my notes. My name is Kim Gross, and I'm speaking on behalf of my employer, Advanced Management Men and Investments, also known as AMI. AMI owns and operates eight hotel properties in Kingman. For the record, we oppose the recent sales tax increase for two important reasons, one financial and one philosophical. A comparison of AMI's economic activity before and after the tax increase shows our revenue down at every hotel except for one. It surprised us that despite an almost $45,000 overall drop in gross revenues, which equates to a 6.5% decrease in one month, there was also a significant increase in the sales tax that we paid to the city. It occurred to us that although changing the tax rate from 2.5% to 3.5% is only a single basis point change in the rate, it actually represents a 40% increase in actual tax dollars. Although that may shock most people, it's the truth. Like most businesses, we operate on a narrow profit margin in a very competitive business environment. This change is significant. Trying to prove the tax increase led to a decrease in business is an impossible task. Our figures merely demonstrate the true impact this increase has on local business. There's a more important reason for us to oppose it. Members of this council are referring to those who oppose the sales tax increase as anti-growth and anti-tax. Nothing could be further from the truth. I personally know many in the business community who are in opposition of this increase, and not one of them wants to see the city stagnate or stop local growth. Who in this room can honestly say that they believe an auto dealer wouldn't want to grow his or her customer base and sell more cars? Or that a home builder wouldn't want more new residents moving into their community? Or that local retailers wouldn't want more consumers coming into their businesses? These are not anti-growth people. Like any responsible businessperson, they want to see the city grow and prosper. It's good for the city, and it's good for local business. It is the council's failure to represent the will of the community that drives this opposition. It appears this council has chosen to only listen to the loudest voice among their fellow council members, rather than listen to the thousands of voices from the community, voices that represent the majority. We do not oppose this sales tax because we are against growth. We oppose it because of the process used by the council, the lack of planning, the lack of transparency, and the lack of community input. We have been accused of being a minority group obstructing the will of the majority. This, again, is a completely false statement. Your tax doesn't enjoy the support from the majority of the community that you were elected to represent. This council has chosen to represent a minority in their effort to leverage the community's future on this project. Councilmembers have publicly stated that the majority must not be denied their voice. There exists a tool that gives the majority a vote. It's called a public vote. If the council truly believes this tax enjoys the support of the majority, please suspend it and hold a public vote. A public vote is the one thing that this council seems to fear the most, which should really tell you all you need to know. Thank you.
Ryan Dooley?
My name is Ryan Dooley, and I live in Rancho Santa Fe. And I rise in support of the ratification of the previous vote on the TPT tax increase. I am encouraged that this council has responded to the concerns of our citizenry and business community by addressing a cap on the increase of big-ticket items. The supermajority requirement will address future councils who might be tempted to divert funds from capital improvement projects to other priorities. Requiring five of seven members to be in favor of any change will ensure collective wisdom in this decision. I would encourage the council to look at all possible revenue sources for addressing capital improvement projects. And if the interchanges can be built with a collaborative effort of all of our business partners and stakeholders, then I would encourage you to do so. Nobody wants to pay more taxes, if it can be avoided. But I have no problem paying a little more if it means better roads, better infrastructure, and a better possibility for future economic development. We have neglected these areas for far too long. We cannot kick this can down the road any further. We're not like the federal government, and I appreciate the lights being on and that this business being open. I'm not a very emotional person. I'm quite risk averse, and I echo the same concerns raised by Tyler Engel in his recent letter to the paper. But I voted for this council, and you were given a mandate. And it hasn't been business as usual. You are tackling the tough issues, and you are getting raked over the coals by just about everybody. You're not going to please everybody, but it is my hope that your collective wisdom will continue to guide our beloved Kingman towards a brighter tomorrow. I trust that you will not make these decisions lightly. Please be collaborative. Let's ratify the TPT increase and move on. We have only given you one funding knob to turn, so please turn it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I oppose the rate increase for a couple of reasons. It's going to drive businesses out. You're already losing businesses in Kingman to a number of reasons. This is another one of those. All it's going to do is increase the property, the consumer tax here. People will be going to Kingman, Las Vegas, I mean, Bullhead City, Las Vegas, or Lake Havas, to shop. Businesses here are going to lose money. Okay? And that's my opposition to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Fredrickson, and I'm a resident of Kingman for over three years. I was going to make this brief and short. I typed out a long thing to read today, but I echo Ryan Dooley's sentiments, and I'm in favor of the TPT tax. I see all the infrastructure issues we're having here, our roads in disarray all over this town, and I like to see a decent and well-deserved, respected city. We should be the Gold Star City of Arizona, being that we're on Interstate 40 with over 80,000 cars a day traveling through. There's no reason why we shouldn't stand out amongst any other city in the state of Arizona. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Doug Dickmeyer. I'm a resident of Kingman. With a vote of five to two, you permanently increased the city's sales tax 75%. With such a large tax increase, citizens and the business owners were upset. This led to a petition to put an initiative on the ballot. Vice Mayor Miles and Councilmember Lingenfeller have stated publicly they will not vote, they will vote, to ratify ordinance 1830R, leaving the 75% tax increase in place, and have also urged the citizens not to sign the petition to have this put on the ballot. Essentially, you are against the citizens voting on this issue. I believe the majority of this council does not listen nor represent the people of Kingman. On one hand, President Trump and the government gave the people a tax cut. That means more money in the pockets of Kingman residents. On the other hand, the city council wants to take more money out of our pockets in form of a tax hike. How can the council do that to the people of Kingman?
I don't know if I have this right. Is it John Danyan? Did I mispronounce that? I'm sorry.
That's Daniel.
Thank you.
That's okay. I thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to express my opinion about the sales tax. I can't believe that the council passed this without due process. I know this meeting is to correct your mistake, but I believe that you'll pass the tax anyway, and the people end up paying this 1%, plus the half percent that you kept in from the pre-existing that was supposed to go off this year. It seems to me like it doesn't matter. Government doesn't want to listen to its people, either local, city, or counties, or even the state. They just want to impose whatever taxes they want. And when will the government have too much tax burden onto the public? How much can we bear? This city councils, has a lot of older, this city, rather, has a lot of older people, which I am retired, and a lot of low-income people, because I know the pay scale is not very high. We've been here four years, and this tax is going to only hurt these people in their pocketbooks. I know that this city doesn't have a property tax, and that all the taxes that you receive for sales tax pays for police, fire, and road repair. This shouldn't be funded by the residents that come into this town and buy and so forth. If the city wants these projects to be done, they should make the property taxes pay for their amenities that they get. And as far as what it's going to do for businesses, I mean, if you go to buy a new vehicle, you're looking at a $20,000 vehicle. It's going to cost you $300 more to buy it here than it would be to buy it in Bullhead. Well, most cars are 35, excuse me, $35,000 to $40,000 now is almost the average car. So that's $600 out of my pocket. So where do you think I'm going to go and buy a vehicle? It sure would be probably Bullhead, not here. And I hate to do that, because we just bought a new vehicle here in town last year. As far as the off-ramps, yes, I know they're going to be beneficial for the city. And I heard years ago, rumors, stories, that these ramps were offered to the city by the state to be placed in, but Kingman didn't want them at the time and so forth. And now to get the funding for that, it's going to take a rather long time to get the state to approve that again, which is fine for the hospital wants to pay for part of it. But who's going to benefit from that? Is it going to be the people? Are we going to take and build shopping centers and have more access to stores? I see a lot of empty stores here in town now. To me, it would be more beneficial, I think, if the city council here would try to find ways to bring more businesses in, to bring more sales tax revenue in, instead of forcing these taxes onto the people who are here or coming here to buy. And that's basically all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, for hearing me out. I don't have anything prepared, so I'm just kind of going to go off the cuff here. I am a small business owner here in Kingman, and for the last year, year and a half, business hasn't been very good at all. And now, since the tax increase has happened, my business has dropped off considerably. I'm now closing my business because I can't keep going on anymore. A lot of it has to do with the tax, but other things also. I'm not happy about the tax increase. I don't, I think that, being how you are elected officials by the people and for the people, you need to listen to the people. And by doing what you have done with increasing that tax, you're not listening to the people. You need to represent them, because they're the ones that put you here in office. You need to understand that. They can take you out of office just as well. Thank you.
Mary McCord?
My favorite people, mayor and councilmembers. I am here to support the TPT increase. Probably not favored in this room tonight, but I am a voice, and my voice counts. And every morning when I drive into town, and I see the city lights, when it's dark and it's glistening, and you think, what a great little town. And then the sun comes up, and you look at it and say, what a dreadful town. Why would I want to stop here? It's stagnant. We have to resist being stagnant. We have to move forward. We have to be progressive, and we have to be persistent. I have marched in so many rallies this past year on these same issues. Kingman deserves the same quality and equality as other cities. And people that speak and talk about, if you raise this tax, or because you've raised this tax, I'm going to go to Bullhead City and shop. How many people go to Bullhead City and shop now? How many go to Costco, and Kohl's, and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, and all the other stores? It's not new. If this city is going to change, change, and change is hard, and change comes at a cost. The jobs are stagnant, the salaries are stagnant, the businesses are stagnant, and I would argue the point that people's revenues have gone down since this tax went into effect. What has happened is, the holidays are over. We don't have that traffic coming into town. November's over, December's over, the New Year is here. So I'm for the tax, because I think we owe it to me, the citizens of the town, and not just the small group that has a large voice right now. The industrial park has to be improved, the interchanges are necessary. We have too many streets in this town that, to this day, are not paved. Can we talk about the road coming into this building? You know, that's worse than the hill was. So, that's not going to happen overnight. So, if you want Kingman to look like it does when the sun comes up and the lights come off, you know, that's what it'll be without this tax. Thanks.
Thank you, mayor. I'm just here to show my support for the TPT ratification. I've lived here my whole life, and this is the first time I've noticed that we're actually trying to do something different, to get results. And I'm not afraid to say that those that I voted for are the ones in support of this TPT, and I am very proud that they are pushing forward with this. We need change, and this will help bring in jobs to hopefully keep people here. Most of the people that I grew up with are gone, because there's nothing here for them, you know, no jobs, no nothing. And really, I mean, a 1% difference in tax, I mean, I haven't noticed any changes in my shopping patterns. I know a lot of people that move here from California and have, this is nothing. They sell out there, and they can buy whatever. I mean, this 1% change, this sales tax is nothing to them. And honestly, I haven't noticed a difference. So I just wanted to keep it short, that I support this, and I hope that the council sticks to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm here to support the TPT. I'm here to support the six-man vote, and I have a few comments about the TPT. Number one, it's intended to pay for interchanges at Rancho Santa Fe and Kingman Crossing. Now, there's been discussion with KRMC about paying for Kingman Crossing, but everybody needs to understand, this isn't free. They want to be paid back by sales tax, of course, and they want a profit. So there's nothing free about building Kingman Crossing. Now, Rancho Santa Fe will open the door to the airport, to the industrial park, and to a new thousand-acre development that Mr. Lenhart spoke about yesterday at the KAMA meeting. And I hope you can all see that tape and hear it. There's a, excuse me, a petition going around to strike the tax increase, and if you do vote for that, you're going to strike pavement preservation. Everybody talks about how poor the roads are, and we're going to strike pavement preservation? How much sense does that make? And to strike the half cent for an interchange at Rancho Santa Fe, and maybe Kingman Crossing, well, that doesn't make any sense either. This is the one opportunity, in the 25 years I've been in Kingman, to do something for Kingman. Now, I want to also add something. All you folks are paying 2.5%, well, right now, 3.5%, but you have been paying 2.5%. Guess what? You're not special. You're not different than anybody else in Butler, and Golden Valley, or anybody that comes here from Kansas or Wisconsin. They all pay 2.5%. So do something for your city and support this tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. Thank you for your service. Sometimes gratitude is an easy thing, and it gets overlooked, but thank you for your diligence in what you're doing to push us ahead. There are many positives that will come from this, and I encourage everyone that is either on the fence or opposed to be more educated, to get to the information that you folks are providing. It would be a huge step forward to see the place grow, and I say that sincerely. I've been here 22 years. I am a resident in the city, certainly appreciate everything that has been done, and looking forward to the positive change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, mayor and council. Thank you very much for your service. I understand what you're going through. I represent KAMA. I'm a board member of KAMA, and we are in support of the TPT. And personally, I'm in support of the supermajority, so we can control those funds as a taxpayer. If we're putting money into a fund, we want to keep it there. We need to invest in our community as a citizens of Kingman. Tom made a good point up there about people that come through here pay the same thing we do living here. I think if you're a resident here and you live here, and I've been here 25 years, we need to invest in our community. A lot of good points made that we can have some improvements here, and I appreciate you guys are looking to do that. I hope that the citizens of Kingman will do a little homework and be informed. Don't listen to fake news, a lot of it going around out there. Do your homework, and we need to invest. And I believe the council is listening to the people. I was up there, we can't make everybody happy. They know how this goes, and, but they, we need to see a change. I would love it. I've been here a long time, and we have just been stagnant. We've had more people move to town, a lot of people coming in from California, and we, it would be nice to see Kingman be beautified somewhat, and our roads sure need some help. So thanks again, and please do your homework, and let's move Kingman ahead and make Kingman great again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. I appreciate you letting us all speak to you. I think the key here is, we do have to move forward, we do have to invest. And when you look at the relevancy, everyone has a credit card. When you pay with that credit card at any establishment, there's a 3.5% NIC or more, depending upon what card you're using, on the establishment that's using it. So when they scream about 2.5 versus 3.5, it's a very small change. Right now, that's your only avenue that you've got. We elected you to move forward, and you're doing the right job. In the future, it may change. You may be able to change it, depending upon what kind of taxing situation you put up, but for right now, you've got the one knob. I agree with it, and good luck.
Thank you.
Hello, madam mayor, councilmembers. My name is George Frankhusky, and I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm in favor of the tax. I had my usual breakfast at a local restaurant yesterday, and the tax increased my bill by seven cents. I don't mind contributing if it moves this city forward. I'm amazed a car dealer, a motorcycle dealer, and a home builder are more afraid of the possibility of losing sales versus seeing our city advance. I understand the city, excuse me, I understand the hospital proposed to build Kingman Crossing. I'm not sure I like the idea of our community hospital acquiring that kind of debt in order to build an interchange. I'd prefer all parties that will gain contribute. KRMC, private landowners, and the city should pay for the interchange. Also, I'd like the city, I'd like to see the city hold up the sale of its land Also, I'd like to see the city hold up the sale of its land until after the interchange is built, and an appraisal reflecting that value is done at the time. Rattlesnake wash should be paid for by private landowners who will benefit the city, the state, and the federal government. Perhaps the airport authority would like to contribute since it will serve as a primary access to I-40. It certainly would be better use of funds as opposed to giving it to lawyers to fight for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.[631.82][631.82][applause] Dennis Lang?
Thank you, Council. Thank you for all your efforts in trying to help the citizens of Kingman, which I am one of. However, I don't think this tax is a good idea. There's a saying, "Don't put too many eggs in one basket," and that's what I think you're doing. What's going to happen when you need some more money? Where are you going to go? All of your revenue is derived from these taxes, from this tax, and it's at the max. What are you going to do? Where are you going to go? 11%? 11.5%? 12%? How much? How much is it going to take before everybody leaves? And nobody buys anything here. Now, I've heard somebody say something about the vote, if the citizens get to decide. And they say, "Well, the roads won't be improved." What's wrong with voting for 5.5% for improving the roads? If you want to improve the roads, vote to improve the roads. What's wrong with voting for Kingman Crossing? If you want Kingman Crossing, vote for Kingman Crossing. Put your X right there. And what's wrong with voting for rattlesnake wash? If you think it's going to help the airport, fine, do it. Put your X right there for rattlesnake wash. Do it all, but let us decide. Inform the people of Kingman and see what they say. And that's what I have to say.
Harley Pettit?
Mayor, Council, thank you for having this special meeting. We had a chance at a perfect storm a while back. Voters voted to sell the city property, and KRM C said that they were interested and that they would even build a Kingman Crossing interchange. The money we would have got from that would go towards Rancho Santa Fe traffic interchange and would take Kingman Crossing off our list of things to do, and it would mount to 1/5 to 1/6 the cost of this combined effort. That's going to put us in debt for a long, long time. Then in light of a known petition against the sales tax, the council seems to insist on pursuing this action. The only thing that would change is if you didn't ratify it tonight. And we've already got two council that I know of that have made up their mind at a previous work session that said they're not going to change their vote. And that's not listening to or representing the citizens of Kingman here. Some of the things in the papers bear this out, things that I've said before, that the cost of this combined project won't equal the rate of return, and that's going to keep us in debt. So when we need public safety, we need another, you know, the effort to go into getting more firemen, more policemen, more public safety, we can still maintain roads. We didn't need this tax going into it. And even the Attorney General says it was ill-conceived and it was done improperly. So with this, eliminating this perfect storm, it's going to cost us five to six times as much if we would have done it, put as much effort into Rancho. Thank you.
Thank you.[902.93][902.93][applause] Bob Bass?
Thank you, Mayor Gates, and members of the City Council. I'd like to thank you for your service and your continued efforts to try to help move our community forward. My name is Bob Bass. I'm a business owner and a resident of the city of Kingman. As I look at the TPT tax and the conversations that have been held by the City Council and our AG's concern that this was approached in the incorrect way, thus the meeting this evening, we're doing things a little bit backwards in our community. We hear that part of this tax will go to help fund possibly Kingman Crossing or Rancho Santa Fe Interchange. If we go back, let's take a little trip back in history. Back in time, 2006, the voters of Kingman approved the moving forward of Kingman Crossing. And at that time, the City Council chose not to do that. Last year, the voters of Kingman approved the moving forward of selling the city's property and moving forward with Kingman Crossing. This council has chose not to listen to the will of the people. The vote has already been there. Why are we now moving forward to say we're going to tax the city of Kingman, the residents, we, the people, when we already have entities, private entities, that will fund Kingman Crossing? It will release us as citizens of the debt that your proposal now will encumber us with. That's not wise management. That's not the will of the people because we've had two votes already that have said a different direction. Now granted, I think you have the right concept that we need to move forward. We do need the interchanges. We have needed them for years. We go back when Rancho Santa Fe was on ADOT's approval to be funded, and the City Council and the mayor at that time chose not to accept the funds. Bad decisions, unfortunately, are history that have affected us as a community. I think it's time that we, the people, you're included as we, the people, you're members of our community. We need to actually step forward and do the right thing. This tax is not the right thing. This tax is creating an issue for our community. We need to allow the private entities to fund Kingman Crossing, take our personal concepts and our personal desires out of the equation, and look at what's best for our community. Then we can move forward to fund Rancho Santa Fe Interchange. I think you also need to consider the gift liability tax issue at the state level. What's ARS statute state about using tax dollars to improve and benefit private entities? You might want to look at that and see what the AG's office says and what possibilities we have for future liabilities if we would fund with tax dollars the Rancho Santa Fe Interchange. Thank you.
Thank you.[1135.42][1135.42][applause] Dan Reed?
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm Dan Reed, an owner-operator of Gas &amp; Grub here in Kingman. And I've been here for about 25 years now and raised a handful of kids here. And you know what? We call Kingman home, and we love it. And the whole reason that people come here is for good old Route 66. And I believe timing is everything. If you look towards Vegas, I-11 is coming. They're going to be done in a handful of months. And instead of having a line at the top of that hill on the weekends, it's going to be every day. And I want to commend you for the decisions you've made in moving forward, making Kingman great. I believe I heard Councilman, it might have been Wyatt, say we all have to do our own thing and our own part and help. And, you know, it's no fun on our end collecting all these taxes and turning them in, but we have to do it. Everybody has to do their part. We have to pay our part. If we want our town to look nice, if we want a couple off-ramps so that as these people come to see good old Route 66, we can cater to them. We can help them get to the Skywalk. We can help them get to all the Grand Canyon and Supai, and we can cater to them. And we can get as many bites out of them as we can before they leave off their vacation. And that's what the Buxner report said. Let them help pay for it. You've made the right decisions. Stick with it. Everybody has their own opinion, and they're going to chip away at you. But it's simple and it's easy, and we just got to work together and make it happen. So that's my two bits, real sweet, real short. Kingman's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1253.74][1253.74][applause] Martin Swante?
Greetings, Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor, and all the council persons. I'm Martin Swante, and I'm a local businessman. In fact, it's 33 years ago this week that we first came to Kingman, and we've been very successful ever since. So we enjoy Kingman and we love Kingman, but there are sometimes some things we have to get involved with, and this is one of them. So anyway, we're definitely, as a businessman, and I'm representing most of the business community, that we are against any increase in taxes. It's a detriment to our business, and it's a detriment to the city, we believe. Okay? And so again, we keep on saying, "No more taxes." But anyway, I think that we ought to listen a little bit to the business community that the Chamber of Commerce put out. It was over 60%, nearly 65%. That's nearly two-for-one, that the business community said, "No additional tax." So we're not listening, and I think we should be. Anyway, our business, and this is verifiable, is down about 10% since November 1st. I think that Mr. Bacon would be able to pick up, pull up November's sales tax, and he can verify this, and it's at least that or perhaps even more. That's the actual tax that was collected in the month of November. December's too soon probably to compare that with. But anyway, I think that that would be a good test for you to take a look at it, because it does identify and segregate by different businesses of the money that's collected. So also, there's other measures that we've had. We've had a survey in one of the automobile dealerships that happened to be a Hyundai, but these come from the factory. These are people that sent the survey to the factory, not to us because we liked it, but the factory thought it was important enough that they forwarded it on to us. But that's what they said, that they'd been a good loyal customer of ours, but with an increase in sales tax, that they would be looking to purchase their car out of town next time, preferably either Bullhead or Lake Abysouf, saving 1.5%, which is a lot. But we -- okay, thank you. But anyway, we just plain are asking you as a business community for no more taxes. Not here to negotiate. We tried to negotiate back in August, if you all remember, about, and when we talked then about a tiered tax and everything. But now other things have come along, and there's a referendum out there that looks really good. So I'm not here to try to negotiate with you. So thank you very much for your time and listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you.[1498.42][1498.42][applause]
Hi, my name is Stephen Redman. I'm a resident here in Kingman, and I just wanted to say that I've been listening to people talk about Kingman Crossing, rattlesnake wash, since I've been here for nine years The community has a long-term plan, from what I understand. The plan includes Kingman Crossing, which opens up a new retail area and gives quick access to Du Hospital and another land route from south to north Kingman. Rancho Santa Fe Interchanges, which will give you quick access from I-40 to the Kingman Airport and Industrial Park for a lot of heavy trucks. I also understand that ADOT prefers the interchange at Rancho Santa Fe because it will relieve some of the heavy truck traffic that is on Antedivee at the Antedivee exit right now. I prefer it because it will give you a direct route for heavy industry and access to the airport Industrial Park, and it is one of the requirements required for the airport to get Phase 2 of the Industrial Park from the government. We need higher-paying jobs, skilled jobs. The Industrial Park is the best path for that for this community, in my opinion. These jobs provide higher paying and provide benefits, including medical. Most people I speak with agree that these are things that need to be built. The question is how to fund it. One proposal is a TPT sales tax. The other one is a property tax. Everyone uses our city roads and infrastructure, whether they are residents of Kingman, tourists, or people passing through. If we're going to raise money to maintain and build these new surfaces, it is my opinion that everyone should chip in. If we choose the property tax route, then only Kingman property owners will be paying for this. To me, that is not fair. I understand some business owners take issue with the TPT because they sell high-dollar items such as cars and houses, and they're afraid it will hit their bottom line. I can understand and sympathize with them. I think that if we have to, we can modify the TPT, maybe even put a cap on it to help some of these businesses out. I always shop local. That is my mantra ever since I've been here. I will shop here before I go elsewhere. Some things I can't. If I want to go to Coles, I can't. There's not one in town. If I want to go to Sam's Club, I can't. There's not one in town. Okay? KRM C offered to buy the land from the city. We had a vote on it to allow the City Council to sell it if they wanted to. It's not a mandate, it's just if they want to. I am not for selling that land to KRM C before the interchange is in. It will be more valuable, a lot more valuable, after the interchange is in. The city can make more money. If KRM C funds this thing, we're going to have to pay them back. We need these projects to move this community forward, and I'm asking the council to keep the TPT. I don't think one penny is that much to get upset about. The total city tax now is 3.5 cents, and we have no other taxes except for fees. Thank you.
Thank you.[1726.83][1726.83][applause] Paul Gaines?
Madam Mayor, Council members, I'm an airport business owner, and I am for the new TPT rate, as long as it is used for improved and new infrastructure. I-11 is coming. New opportunity is coming. Are we going to embrace it or cast it aside? A common argument made is that people will shop elsewhere because of our sales tax. I will speak for myself only, but this is simply not the case for me. And if I happen to make a big purchase outside of Kingman, it's because of better selection or service. In fact, more and more businesses are now opening within the city limits, and I find myself rarely spending money outside of Kingman. Second point I have is KAMA. Kingman and Mojave Manufacturing Association says, "Our county's only organization of its kind, which strongly supports the new TPT and interchanges it will fund." I attended their open, one-and-a-half-hour-long panel discussion yesterday. Councilman Wade was on the panel. Vice Mayor Miles was there, and is a KAMA member, by the way. Vice Mayor Miles was there, and is a KAMA member, by the way, and Mayor Gates attended. Are we going to listen to our local industry leaders or are we going to ignore them? Improved access to the airport and industrial park, excuse me, industrial park off of I-40 would be part of the overall mix our community needs. This will help forge our way into the 21st century. It will put us on the radar for industrial and high-tech, higher-paying jobs, and that's exactly what our community needs right now. I would strongly encourage members of the council to meet with KAMA, led by John Hanson. They have put a lot of time and energy into presenting an argument for the interchanges. And lastly, this is about planning ahead, and that's really most important, I think. It's about all of us investing in our community and our future. These projects have been talked about for many, many years and this is a solid way to turn the talking into reality. Thank you.
Thank you.[653.57][653.57][applause] John Hanson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to speak with you. I want to thank the council for the tough position that you have taken. I recognize that debate is really important. I recognize that not everybody agrees, but we have to do the right thing and a smart thing. I implore you to ratify the sales tax. I implore you to consider the supermajority, to change the application of those funds. And I would hope that to address some of the concerns about big-ticket purchases, that we look at the big-ticket rate for tax. The fact is that Kingman is uniquely situated in a crossroads of transportation. That transportation comes here, spends money here, will buy things here, and that's new money into our community. If we don't do something, if we don't figure out a way to hang out our welcome sign to that business, we're not going to have it. If we don't figure out how to do the I-11 interchange, the connector, we're going to end up missing a lot of that development that's going to come. So I don't think that we have time to really have a long discussion. I don't think that we have the luxury of being able to do that. We've talked about this for a long time. Those interchanges are vital to our city. So like I say, I think the tax, the thing that troubles me and puzzles me about the tax is that for a family of two and a half folks, if it's possible to have that many, for that family, they're going to pay about $180 a year, I think, more sales tax than they would have if they had, if we didn't raise the tax. If you stop and think about it, that's about one cup of Starbucks coffee every week. You know, so we're not talking about a lot of money. We're not talking about a huge difference in the amount of money that people are going to spend. So I really think that the idea that this is a lot of money is going to cost us a lot of money as a city is kind of, as individuals to pay to our city is kind of odd. The other thing I want to make sure that everybody knows, and this is a true, a question of truth or what you hear, but the hospital is not going to pay for the interchange. They may front the money for it, but their money tree is just as dead as the city of Kingman's money tree. There's no money there. The people who talked about helping to build the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway, they're not going to pay for that completely. In fact, if we don't put some skin in the game as Kingman, that will not be built. So I really want to express the need on behalf of KAMA and other manufacturers, other industrial residents of the Industrial Park. This is make or break for the park. It can make us very successful or we can end up failing because of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[869.32][869.32][applause] I don't, we took the microphone away. I don't know what else we can do. Can you, want to turn down that volume? Councilmember Yokum, we're getting an awful lot of feedback. We're going to ask you to mute or try and turn that down, please. Thank you. Sarah Ferry?
Hi, Mayor Monica Gates and Vice Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you. I am a lifelong resident here in Kingman. I was born and raised. I'm one of a few of my friends that decided to come back and live here and make Kingman home and raise a family here. I have my little eight-year-old son curled up in a ball over there sleeping right now. But I understand that people don't want to pay taxes, more taxes. Nobody wants to pay taxes, you know? But at least in our community, we know that it's going back into our community. And I feel that without a property tax in Kingman, we don't have too many options to fund the things that need to be funded in our community. There's a couple misconceptions, I think, going around right now. One is that we weren't told about this and we weren't informed and we were blindsided. I don't believe that that's the truth. I mean, I've come to the city council meetings that led up to the vote that you all took and I heard the staff give a presentation on the fact that we really need money in our city. And, you know, I just, there's plenty of opportunity and there's lots of information out there. I think people need to take the opportunity and come to the city council and listen. I'm also a small business owner. I just, my husband and I just bought a business and this is something that I'm really proud of. You know, this is a dream for me, to own a business in my hometown. And I just can't believe the support that we've been given, you know? But I do have to say that I'm not a member of the Chamber of Commerce and I just, I have to question the accuracy of the statistics that they're giving because the 60% of people not wanting this, I'm sure there's a lot of other people that have businesses in our community that are not Chamber members. So I definitely feel that we should not make our decisions based on that statistic. Kingman Crossing is much needed for our emergency services. You know, we made some mistakes in the past and there are people that are cut off from emergency services and that's, that is definitely really important. And it has the potential to bring in other retail businesses. But Rancho is going to bring the jobs that we need in our community, you know? And we can't have the retail without the jobs. I also want to mention that one more misconception that I don't think that the community is hearing about is, from a lot of these car dealers and home builders, is that there's conversation about a big-ticket item about, and I think that that's a compromise and I think that that's something that people should know about. And so maybe we can be a little more informed about that in our discussions. Thank you so much. I support this and I also support the supermajority and I support both of the interchanges.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.[1131.83][1131.83][applause]
Mark Niski? I don't know if I said that right. Did I pronounce that correctly, sir?
Close enough.
Okay, thank you.
Niski rhymes with whiskey. Mark Niski, resident mayor, council. Thank you for your time and an opportunity to make a few comments. Towns must grow or they will die. We see all over the country some towns that have failed to embrace change and to move on and to grow with the times. Look at New York started off as a fur trading port. It has repeatedly grown and changed and now look at it. Other towns in our nation we could point to that have not made wise choices, but we will move on. I encourage everybody to support these changes. Nothing is free. You get what you pay for. However we have to pay for it, if it's by taxes, bite the bullet, get it done, move on, build a town. Our youth needs opportunities. I have lived and worked all over this country. I've seen so many industrial parks and I can tell you the one out here needs attention. These new interchanges, and I applaud any positive efforts to bring in these interchanges, to bring in the ability to move traffic through, the improvements at the airport authority. We have a beautiful, an opportunity with an airport, major transportation hubs on interstates and train lines that could be developed and expanded. And these things are what provide the youth of our town right now, the opportunities for the future. They are coming and this town to grow must be able to absorb them, employ them, and grow as a whole. And it's really a small investment for a big bang over time. And looking out for the youth of today, to have a place in the world of tomorrow, that's one of my big interests and that's why I support this and I encourage all the people that I support, that I talk to, to support this. And, you know, to just have a little less Starbucks and we'll be all right. And I thank you for your time.
John Timko?
Thank you, Mayor Gates and members of the council. Thank you for all you put up with and for all the slings and arrows that you take for trying to do the right thing. I hate to have people say that you don't listen. The people that say you don't listen are the people that disagree with the decision you made. You can listen and still make a decision that people don't agree with and I hope that's what you're going to do tonight. When you look at Kingman and Bullhead City and Lake Havasu, what's the major difference other than the stores and the restaurants and the parks? A river runs through them. And they've built those towns around a natural asset that they had and they've become communities that attract growth and attract visitors. And Kingman doesn't have a river. But we do. We do. It's called the BNSF rail line. It's called the Kingman Airport. It's called the I-40, which is a major east-west corridor, and soon the I-11, which is a major north-south corridor. And out at the confluence of all of that river is acres and acres of flat land to build warehouses and manufacturing facilities. According to the research that was done by Sarah Merly of Applied Economics, who was hired by the city to study the economic impact of the I-11 East-Kingman connection for the presentation that we made to the governor, here's the future of Kingman with these two interchanges. The annual economic impact of $5.09 billion had build-out, supporting 36,000 direct jobs, 6,700 indirect jobs, and 7,300 induced jobs in Mojave County. An additional $9.6 billion of construction impact over the development period. $259.8 million in one-time construction sales tax to the state and $37.7 million in annual retail sales tax revenue. $127.4 million in construction sales tax to the city. $127.8 million in ongoing taxes to local governments. Manufacturing and distribution jobs, potential $28,800. Neighborhood and residential commercial, 6,900 jobs. That's the future that's ahead of you, according to people that you paid because you thought they knew how to calculate this stuff. And so my question is, if not now, when? And if not now, why the heck not? Why would you walk away from that kind of future? Kingman will not have an opportunity of this magnitude in our lifetimes. So you need to decide whether you're going to allow the self-interest of a few, and believe me, the few that we're talking about do have self-interest, or are you going to let them cheat the city of Kingman and its residents out of its destiny? Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1510.82][1510.82][applause] Susan Williams?
Good evening, Honorable Gates and City Council members. My name is Susan Williams and I have been a resident of Mojave County for more than 25 years. I'm a registered dietitian and I have worked my career here improving the lives of us citizens. And what hasn't been discussed here is we need health in all places. And how we have health is we provide road bike paths. We improve the road so people can get to and from work using either walk paths or using their bicycles. We work at this end to educate and teach people how to do these things. But if there aren't the facilities out here to build a healthy community, how can we expect our community residents to be healthy? And Mojave County tops the charts in high rates of death by chronic disease. And when are we, as a community, going to change that? And so I thank you all, council members, for doing your due diligence with the information that you've been providing. And to see this many people here at a meeting. So if you say a third of the population here in Kingman are adults, we have less than 10% here in the crowd. So when they say we're not hearing the voice of the people, where are those people? And where are those people when they vote? What percentage shows up to vote? 20%? Correct me. So I thank you for moving forward and I am in favor of this TPT tax. Thank you.
Thank you.[1639.65][1639.65][applause] Jasmine Marin?
Good evening, council. My name's Jasmine Marin and I am a small business owner here in Kingman. I have lived here for over nine years now and this is the first time I've attended one of these meetings. And one of the reasons that this is the first time I've attended one of these meetings is because I am quite busy doing my business day and night all the time. However, my business does not involve sales tax because it's a service business, so this tax doesn't directly affect my business. It only affects me shopping in town. I am absolutely in support of anything that you guys can do to make this town grow. In the nine years that I have lived here, I have seen so many young people from ages of 20 to 35 come here, get experience, and leave. They don't stay because our town hasn't been growing. And this is the first time I'm actually with you, city council, this first city council is the first time I'm seeing the possibility of improvement in our town, of growth. Our downtown is growing. Things are finally starting to shift. It's a place that I'm excited to stay. And I can tell you personally that if things don't grow here, I will be considering leaving. And I know so many other people leave here. So if it comes to a property tax, I own a home, I would be happy to pay a property tax. If it's a sales tax, give it to me. I want to pay it because I want to support this town growing. Thank you.
Thank you.[1743.11][1743.11][applause] Deborah Sixta?
Councilwoman, staff. Thank you for letting me talk for a moment. I want to say that I am in favor of the tax. I have three small businesses that I run in Kingman currently. And even though running them is really busy, I make it to the meetings. I make sure I know when the meetings are. This was not a backdoor situation. I mean, there were many, many meetings and workshops and talk about this tax. So I just want to say that I admire you, I respect you, and go get them.[1793.47][1793.47][applause]
Thank you.[1796.32][1796.32][applause] Thank you. Curtis Kutchel.
My name's Curtis Kutchel. I'm a 58-year resident of Kingman, Arizona. Raised my family here. Been sitting here, listening to both sides, very strongly both sides, and I'm kind of torn. I'm kind of torn because as an individual, a citizen of this place, sure, I want growth. I want growth. I want new jobs. I want higher wages. I want better roads. But I've watched this community. I've watched this community grow. I think that we're victims of unkept promises, unkept promises throughout the years. You know, I've been listening to things of Rattlesnake Wash and Rancho Santa Fe and Kingman Crossing, and the promises that are made over a period of time, and it's disappointing. Do I want a new tax? Of course not. But yet again, I'm also a realist. To get things that we need to grow our city, and sometimes, you know, that might be the only chance. I'm hoping that if that's what the decision is made, that is the only chance. I hope that it works. That's the big deal. I've had some conversations with a few of the council, and they know how I feel. If we're going to do this, it better work because I don't think we have any way out. If it doesn't work, I don't know what a Plan B will be. As citizens of the community, I mean, we are putting our eggs in this basket if that's the decision you make tonight, but it's got to work. It has to work. I don't want a new tax, but I want all the things that come with what is being promised with this new tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. Kind of agree with Curtis, you know, sitting there and going last, I think, but I was kind of on the fence and heard a lot of the discussions. I'm probably like every other resident, we don't want a tax because we lack our money and we want to keep it, but I am for growth, but I'm also for responsible growth. And I think that responsible word is the key, that we can't do it just, you know, on a whim or anything like that. I'm for responsible spending, and that comes with the growth. We all know our roads need to be improved. We drive them every day. There's a lot of improvements the city needs. You know, the parks need improving, just Kingman in general, and that all takes money. I think we all understand that. How we do all this, how we bring the money, is we bring quality jobs to Kingman, and with growth comes quality jobs. Now, we don't need a bunch of Buffalo Wild Wings and Coles here because, you know, those are the retail jobs. They're quality jobs, but we need jobs to support the people that'll go in and buy that stuff. We can do that through the growth of the airpark, through the industrial park, with I-11, with different businesses coming in. What scares me is I was in this city council meeting about four months ago, and there was conversation about looking at purchasing two properties on the corner of Eastern, right over there by Diamond, where it's a hairpin turn, to straighten that road out by two resident lots. That, to me, is like, whoa, we've got bigger fish to fry. Let's, you know, we're all good to slowing down at 15 miles an hour and going around that curve there, and then turn down the one-way debacle, but that was pre-you guys. I'm not blaming anyone. We need to fix the things that need fixing first, prioritize them. I just don't want to make sure, I want to make sure that we're not running around like a new college kid with a brand-new credit card from mom and dad. We do it responsibly. We do it educated. We do it informed. I can tell Martin and Cody that I will continue to buy my vehicles with them, and I will continue to shop local because I support Kingman and I have loyalty towards them. They're good friends, and I have loyalty with them. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, I don't have anyone else signed up. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on this item? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Well, sir, you already spoke. We're looking for if anyone else has a comment. Thank you.
I have, but there's something that hasn't been addressed yet.
Sir, I'm sorry. One bite at the apple. I'm sorry.
Mayor, council members, my name is Chair Samley. I do have a slip, so I will bring it up to the clerk. I am a citizen, resident of Kingman for 30 years, and I too am torn. You know, I don't know, I know we need to grow, but I too am torn, just like Curtis. I just want to give you some things to consider and to think about. First of all, the big-ticket option. Can we please entertain and can we talk more about the big-ticket option? I know it's out there. I don't know how much it's been talked about, but we should talk about the big-ticket option. I think that some tax is better than no tax on the big-ticket option. So if people are going to leave the area to buy these, make these big purchases, wouldn't we want to have some option or some compromise for them to stay in our community? The supermajority for fiscal decisions, I definitely agree with. I think that we need to have a supermajority when you're moving monies around or when you're spending large amounts of money. I definitely agree with that. Can you say with certainty that the half percent is going to go towards the interchanges? I know it is under this umbrella of capital improvements, but can you say that it's going to go to the interchanges? And if you can't, the public should know. They should know that if that money is set aside and that tax has been increased, that it can't, you know, that it can be moved. I also agree with the half cent for the road preservation, but again, you need to protect those funds. You need to make sure that you do as you're promising. Put them towards infrastructure and make them go towards the roads. I have no issue contributing, but I will have an issue with the funds not being allocated as promised. So please be responsible. If you're going to vote in favor, make sure you protect our money, the citizens of Kingman.
Does anyone else in the audience wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to, oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, that's one we just heard. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will move on to item three, which is confirmation of previous direction to staff regarding the TPP ratification ordinances or alternative direction regarding TPP. Mr. Bacon.
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council, and thanks to everybody who took the time to come to the town hall tonight. The previous direction that council had given, as I think everybody is aware, is that following tonight's meeting, that the items referred to in the Attorney General's letter all be placed on your agenda at a special meeting next Tuesday, the 30th, for consideration by this council. And unless somebody has a different direction that they'd like to offer up, staff is prepared to go ahead, notice that meeting, notice those items on that meeting, and see you all back at 5:30 next Tuesday.
Any discussion from council? Yeah, I think then the, you have a question certainly? Yes. Mr. Bacon, can you clarify for us? Will the supermajority and the big ticket be on the 30th, or is that something that we will see in a regular meeting?
Thank you for the question, council member, Mayor Gates, members of council. The answer to that question is that, based on previous discussions, and actually based on some comments made tonight, you'd like to see actual data, not only from Kingman, but also from our neighboring cities, before you talked about big-ticket option. And we're just now starting to get that information, so that wouldn't be. If you wanted to talk about supermajority next week and put that on as a fourth agenda item with, if you will, then you could do that. But the direction that we got specific, that we remember as a staff specifically, was what I said earlier, just those three ordinances. So it's council's choice whether you want to add the fourth item, which would be a consideration of supermajority.
Well, this time we'll put it in the form of a question. Could that supermajority, which you define as six out of seven votes, be applicable to this sales tax increase?
Thank you for framing it as a question. The answer is no. Cannot apply, can't, you can consider on the same meeting, but because of the way the approval process goes, and city attorney can explain this better than I, it would not apply to the items on next week's agenda for next week, but in 30 days, it would apply to those three items prospectively. Does that, does that make sense? Go ahead, try again.
Yeah, let me try again, and I'm not sure.
I'm sorry.
This is in the form of a question, so we'll put a question mark at the end here.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't score me well on that answer either, so go ahead, try again.
So this would be, the supermajority would be a restriction that only applies to future actions that this council is not willing to restrict themselves to?
Well.
Or not able to restrict themselves to?
There is a, yeah, there is a time period between next week, when you, that question presumes that the council would act to ratify the three items from last August, and it's a time period of maybe 28 or 31 days, somewhere in there, where it wouldn't apply. But after that time period, when it was effective, it would apply to the three, or the two, or the one, how many ever ordinances you approved last week. So the reason that you and I have this question and answer discussion is that there is not a way to have the council act next week on the three ordinances that are before you and the supermajority, and have it take effect immediately.
Okay.
It can take action on those same four things, and they would be, the supermajority would be in effect 30 days from the date of passage. Mr. Cooper, would you like to say something else?
Sure. And as I explained that, as we're working on the supermajority ordinance, it's going to relate to the finance of shifting the funds or increasing the TPP. It's not going to be, it wouldn't even address this issue anyways because we're not increasing the TPP. The council's already done that. You're ratifying that decision, so this would not even apply to a ratification anyways. So there's really no way short of, you know, the council making that vote.
Thank you for that clarification.
Madam Mayor, I've got a question. In my opinion, this is, you can call it a ratification, but it's a new vote, and the supermajority has a clause where it can be an emergency basis. So it could be implemented, and I know this is the second time I've asked this question, Mr. Cooper.
Yes, ma'am.
I still don't understand why it couldn't be implemented on an emergency basis for a new vote for tax increase.
One, it's not an emergency, so you have to be able to justify it as an emergency to pass an ordinance that goes into effect right away. And again, it's not a vote to increase taxes. You've already done that. It wouldn't apply. You've already increased the taxes. The taxes are in effect.
What's a criteria for an emergency?
That's a tougher one. There's not a lot out there. Generally, you'll see them stricken down as councils trying to move something forward as an emergency because they want to do something that night, sort of like what we're trying to do. But, and again, I would go back again, if the council wants to say it's an emergency, the council is more than willing to say it's an emergency. I would tell you that is, probably doesn't meet that criteria, but the council can choose to take a lot of actions they want to take. But again, I would go back, you are not increasing the TPP rate next Tuesday. You've already done that. It's in effect. You're already collecting the taxes.
Councilmember Cress, Mayor Gates, members of council, we, I think, had this conversation earlier as well, but just so that Carl and I are at least clear in our advice to you, the Attorney General's opinion essentially says that what the error was in August of 2017 had to do with the notice of the meeting, not the act. So we're, he's asking the council to properly notice the meeting and then have the council redo the act with the proper notice having been given. That's, that's different in the law, says the non-lawyer of the two staff people here. And I'll let the city attorney comment on that. But in my opinion, that's different than what your question suggests, which is that there's new ordinances being considered. The only reason that you're being asked by the Attorney General's office to reconsider is because of the notice requirement that he found to be defective in the August 15th meeting. So.
Mr. Bacon, does that mean that no one can change their vote next Tuesday?
No, it doesn't mean that at all.
So would that not be described as a new vote?
Carl, go ahead.
All you're doing is voting on ratification. So if you want to vote to support ratification, you can, but you can also vote to not ratify, but it's strictly ratification of the previous action. I know it's splitting hairs, but that's what we have to do, according to the state statute, according to the Attorney General's office. It's not a new vote on the TPP. And I know you disagree, and we've had a discussion. I understand that.
We have.
Are you clear?
And I'm just troubled that there's very little criteria to describe an emergency basis for a supermajority.
And unfortunately, there's, yeah, nothing in the statutes.
I know, I know I'm going to lose this argument, but I just felt like I needed to say that.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Staley?
What, I think, Jen, do you, you were, you're before me. I just wanted to clarify that the supermajority, if we adopt it, would apply to any dedicated item, not just these two funded streams, any dedicated line item. Is that correct?
Go ahead.
It depends on how we write it, and I think that's the intent that we're getting from the council, is these revenue streams that are coming in are dedicated to a sort or an expenditure area. So my intent is when we write it or draft it, to apply to those situations.
And the other thing that I wanted to clarify is that if we do accept the supermajority, and I think there is a lot of support for that in the community, and we have the dedicated half cent for capital projects, if we do, as a council, use that to take on the revenue bonds for the infrastructure interchange development, would that be subject, would that decision to go into a debt service require a vote?
Well, unfortunately, we don't have the language drafted, but what I, my impression of that whole situation would be is it's, it would be, not require a supermajority vote because the idea of capital improvement projects are generally going to be bonded out anyways unless you're going pay-as-you-go. So you're not changing where that money's being spent, you're just changing, you know, you're just refunding or paying back that debt, which is going to capital improvement projects.
Well, I think it's really important that that be written in such a way that that conversion could take place and without a supermajority vote.
And I know we had this conversation earlier, too, Vice Mayor Miles, Mayor Gates, members of council, on what you described. That ironically, effectively converts that money into a supermajority, and it's seven because you can't, now that you've issued the debt, it's, for the term of the debt, it's not, it's not going to be reversible. And so the real focus, the real focus of this supermajority idea, as I've shared with this council on more than one occasion, is for the local street segment, to make sure that that, in fact, is used exactly for that purpose and only for that purpose, and it takes at least six of the then-sitting city council to even have a, to have a successful vote to move those dollars. And so the only question I think that Carl and I have at this point is whether the council wants us to have the supermajority on next week's agenda, or you want to defer that to a later meeting.
Well, did we not just have that on the work session, our last council?
We had a work session on this maybe two weeks ago.
So a normal process that could come up at our next regular meeting? So, in a normal process, that we could come up at our next regular meeting?
You could have it come up at your next regular meeting, if that's the direction to staff, that that's when you'd like it.
If it's ready.
Yeah, if, assuming that Carl could draft it.
And I would ask for a little more time, just...
That's what I was thinking.
I want to make sure it's done right.
I want to make sure it's drafted. You have plenty of time to draft it correctly.
Try not to get it squished in too fast.
Councilmember Lincolnfelter?
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to say thank you to everybody that's here tonight, taking time out of your schedules, whether you're for or against what we're talking about this evening. Public policy is made by those that show up, so I want to thank you all for showing up tonight and being a part of it. You know, I'd like to see on the 30th, the ratification ordinances, and I'd also like to see the supermajority discussion continue, because we certainly want to make sure that whatever we say, these monies are going to be allocated towards, that they stay that way unless the supermajority of the next, the next council says it needs to change. My vote, you know, you heard a lot of support on infrastructure tonight. It's all based out of the general plan, the Kingman General Plan 2030, which was voted on and approved by our voters.
Councilmember Lincolnfelter, did you have anything else that you wanted to see at the January 30th meeting? If we could kind of keep it focused to that, please?
No, I just, the ratification ordinances and the supermajority. I'd love to see that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Staley, you had a question or a comment?
Actually, my question was for Mr. Bacon. Just, I wanted to see a better, or a more in-depth explanation about the supermajority, but I think you just covered that. I just want to make sure that everybody here tonight knew what the intention of the supermajority was for. And I think we heard a lot of people talk tonight about guarantees, that it was going to go where we, we say it's going to go, and future councils won't be able to change that direction. And that's where you came up with the idea. So, I just want to make sure that everybody knew what the intention was.
Thank you. And with, based on the other comments around the dais, without objection, we will agendacize next Tuesday's meeting, have the three ordinances and a continued discussion on supermajority.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else on item three? Seeing none, I want to thank everyone for your attendance this evening, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.